Everyone, good, welcome back. Madam Masiallo, are you available, are you back with us?
I am.
Okay, perfect.
So, call the roll.
Yeah, you're important here. So, for, for, for those joining us now, welcome to the SUNY Erie Board of Trustees meeting this Thursday, September 30th of 2021. We, well, before I go into that, we will ask trustee Masiallo to call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Todd Hobler. Todd, you may be muted.
People probably took an extra minute.
But we'll come back to him. Len Lennahan? We're in trouble. I am here, Kate Masiallo, Carrie Phillips. I think you're gonna have to give people more time.
Yeah.
That's why I was hoping we'd just go straight into this because I was afraid we were gonna lose folks. Shall I continue?
I'll, I'll just use this time to say, for those who are joining us now as we are live broadcasting, this morning, we held the Committee of the Whole meeting, where we thoroughly discussed items that will be presented on this agenda today. There may be some questions, comments, or concerns, but what you'll notice is that this meeting will move fairly quickly. As I said, we've had the Committee of the Whole meeting this morning, and so many of these items were already discussed. Perhaps that bought us some time?
Try again. Todd, I'm calling the roll. Todd Hobler?
Oh, she, I think we lost Todd.
Len Lennahan? Again, I am here, Carrie Phillips. I see the name is still on the... Can anybody unmute the board members, please? Jeff Stone?
Present.
Susan Swartz? Absent. Danise Wilson?
Here.
Travis Poling? Travis was on, and he's not there, so we don't have...
Todd is currently rejoining.
Sorry, guys, I'm back.
Thank you, Len.
Sorry.
You're looking for Todd Hobler? Travis Poling? Carrie Phillips?
We are reaching out to the trustees to see what happened.
Travis had to go to class. He was only gonna be in the car for a little while, which is why I was hoping we could just go right into it.
This is Carrie Phillips. I had to get off and reconnect. I couldn't hear anybody. It was all the, everything was spinning, but I'm here now.
Okay, great.
Okay. Okay, we have quorum.
And Todd, you are here? You're on mute, Todd.
I'm here.
Awesome. Okay, so we have present Todd Hobler, Len Lennahan, Kate Masiallo, Carrie Phillips, Jeffrey Stone, and Danise Wilson. Which is six, and we have a quorum.
Thank you. So at this time, I would like to call the meeting to order. In front of us today, we have the Consent Agenda, Items 1 through 13. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Fifteen items on that.
I'm sorry. One through, I'm sorry, Kate?
There are fifteen items on the consent agenda?
Thank you, I'm sorry.
I would like to remove item fifteen for amendment I'd like to offer later, but we can do one through fourteen, if you'd like.
I'll, I'll move the, move the remaining items.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Oh, sorry.
Aye.
Any opposed? Items 1 through 14 are approved.
Madam Chairman, I would like to offer a friendly amendment to item number fifteen in the resolution regarding the Academics and Facilities Master Plan. I would suggest adding a final fifth whereas, which will read, "Whereas the SUNY Erie Board of Trustees recognizes that the Academic and Facilities Master Plan is just that, a plan, and that its implementation depends on improved financial conditions and community input, and is therefore subject to change."
Thank you, trustee Masiallo. May I have a motion to approve item fifteen pending amendments?
I'll move that. Thank you. Kate?
Second. There are second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. You'll have in front of you, items 1 through 16 for board information.
Chairwoman? Were we going to add items 1 through 5 from the Committee of the Whole to the Consent Agenda? Meaning the ASC Quarterly Financial Summary Report, the ASC Third Quarter Financial Report, the Foundation Statement of Activity, the Foundation Donations, and the Foundation Annual Report on Goal Metrics? I thought I heard they were going to add that to the Consent Agenda.
There under board information, Kate, is items number four to eight.
I just thought I heard during the last meeting we were gonna add those to the Consent Agenda, so my thoughts.
No, it was the, it was the items right above that, the T-Mobile, Fourth Amendment, Four-lease Extension, Disposable Materials, Establishing the Capital Project, and SUNY Erie. No problem. So just for clarification purposes, there are, the items from the Consent Agenda are moved, excuse me, from the Committee of the Whole meeting, are moved to the, to the Board Agenda for Board's Information, items 1 through 16. Are there any questions, comments? Thank you. As I stated earlier, in the meeting, we did go over each of these items thoroughly at the Committee of the Whole meeting. I'll move on to Policy and Governance. Chair Masiallo.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. As you have seen, we have not had a meeting. Our meeting for September was canceled. Trying to find where this, I'm confused with all these agendas. Six, sorry. So, we have, you, at our last meeting, we passed the minutes from the prior, the most recent Policy and Governance Committee meeting, so therefore, before you all, we have is a schedule, the upcoming meeting schedule for the Policy and Governance Committee. We won't be meeting the first Wednesday of the month, generally, and right now, we're scheduled to be meeting via WebEx, but we'll revisit that modality as conditions change. It's just our information item for the board.
Thank you.
That's all I have unless anyone has questions.
Thank you. The report of the chairwoman. First, I just want to say, welcome back to students and faculty. Thank you to everyone who got vaccinated and are allowing us to be here in person safely. I want to report that I had the opportunity to speak at convocation and also attend many of the breakout sessions that were geared towards the Middle States, and it was very good to hear the conversations, the ideas, and very, I guess I would say, very solution-based conversations. Not, it wasn't like a complaint forum. It was really, really proactive, and it was refreshing to hear. I felt a different energy in the room. I felt that everyone were on the same accord, and they were energized to move forward. And so, I just want to just, again, thank all of the faculty and staff who participated in that day and continue to do the hard work of moving the college forward. That was, it was an honor to be a part of that. So, thank you. I'll update you a little bit on the Presidential Search. We are meeting on October 5th to, the Search Committee, to go through and move forward the resumes that we see, are see fit. We have approximately forty applicants right now, and we, there's definitely a great applicant pool. Again, we are committed to finding the right person for SUNY Erie and someone that can take this to, take us into the future. Not saying that Bill is going anywhere anytime soon, but this is definitely just a process that we are undergoing. And if anyone has any questions about the search, please let me know. And I thank all of you who are participating on the committee. I want to say publicly, while we are in this forum, thank you again to Kathy and Eric on their work with Middle States and rewriting that draft. We appreciate you for your time and your commitment there, so I needed to make that perfectly clear. There is an item here, the Correction Action Plan Updates for the Board on the October 28th meeting.
It's an annual item that the chair updates all the cap report.
Okay.
We'll help you on that.
Okay, thank you, because I do not have anything prepared today. So look forward to that coming up. And then, we have for Board Approval. Actually, before I go into that, for all my fellow trustees, there, there was an email to try to schedule a board retreat this upcoming February. It is very difficult to find dates that work with everyone, but during this retreat, this is where we do a lot, well, a lot of work with strategic planning. This is also where we take our board evaluation. So, or take and discuss our board evaluation. So I will just ask that if none of these dates work, let's move until the next, the early next month, which is probably the latest we would want to do it. Normally, this would be done in September, but between the search, between, you know, Middle States, I did not want to add another thing onto your plates. So if you can please look at a Friday, there was a point in time where we would have the evening before and then an extra day, and that is difficult for, for folks. So if that, if those days absolutely do not work for everyone, I'm just asking if we can find a day, probably the next, the first two Fridays in March. We'll ask Bill to be there, our, well, February, February, I think, a lot of people, so it, we have gaps. If you have not responded to Kelly, please respond to Kelly and give her your date. We are planning to have key individuals from staff there, as well as Bill and possibly our new president. So, this is very important for us to do. I'm thinking, all right, so now we're, we're moving on to the SUNY Erie Board of Trustees meeting schedule. And if we can look, look at that really quickly, I would like to propose an amendment to this, well, this meeting schedule. August is a very difficult month for many. That's a high vacation month. That's a high, people are just really hard to get. So I would propose that we have no meeting in the month of August and possibly a meeting in July. I'm hesitant to have no meeting two months in a row. The other thing that I would like to add to this is to have the September meeting that Thursday, September 30th, right? But also to get a date for our retreat in September. So for, this is, wait a minute, I'm looking at these dates.
The September 30th is actually today's meeting.
Right.
So.
So let's go a year, let's, let's...
Talking about the following September.
Yeah, the following September. So September of 2022, if we can add a next line on here to include September, even though it's next year, but I want, I would like the trustees to plan that far ahead for the retreat date, so we can have the retreat, our annual meeting, all in the same month. And I won't, I won't make anyone commit to a date now. I guess we'll do another Doodle Poll for a Friday in September. But I think the Fridays works best for most, for our non-day retreat. So just to summary, my, my suggestion would be meeting in July, no meeting in August. September, keep our annual meeting, but then also add a retreat in September before our, our annual meeting. Any comments?
Denise, Denise, I think I can support those suggestions in my mind, but I just would like to ask if, if there's any utility to a meeting in August based on the beginning of school and enrollment issues, things like that. We did not meet this August. But if Bill or, an August meeting is important, I guess we should consider that before we make a decision.
I, we were able to balance the agenda this month and wait for the September for action items. I just, staff is, just has to plan ahead, knowing what the dates of the board meetings are and hit those dates. So it's not an impediment to us, Jeff, we were able to work it out this month. I don't want to tell the board when to meet. Staff will be available and make sure everything's there. Board also has the ability to always call a special meeting if there's some hot topic or hot need that would come out, that you can have a special meeting too.
Yeah, that's fine. I do agree, August is more of a, they take months for a lot of people.
Yeah. Okay, so I know this is for approval, but would you like to see a new, a new draft before we're, before we approve it, or would we want to approve it pending amendments? What would be the pleasure of fellow trustees?
Denise, I don't, I don't think it's a problem waiting to, to approve the item, the schedule till next month. Gives us a chance to work through some of these issues about August and July, and also the annual retreat. So I have no problem waiting another month if that works for everybody.
It's perfectly fine with me.
Me too.
Not a problem, can you, Bill?
For me, I'm gonna be in my backyard on the lounge chair.
No, I mean, if we don't do something in place, is it a problem?
No, not much ever. I'll be playing with my bees and my chickens.
So he thinks. Okay, so, I'm sorry, Kate? Okay, so we are tabling the, actually, it was really just for board information and not approval.
Meeting schedules for approval, the Committee of the Whole schedules for information.
Got you. Okay. Okay, so we're pending, or excuse me, we're tabling the Board of Trustees meeting schedule. So request for motion to approve the 2022 SUNY Erie Board of, Board Meeting Schedule has been tabled. For board information, we have the Erie, Erie, excuse me, the SUNY Erie Committee of the Whole Meeting Schedule.
Same date, so we will refine that too.
Okay. Oh, I jumped ahead with the Presidential Search, but co-chair Lennahan, do you want to add anything else?
Denise, I summed it up very well. We do have a number of candidates. I think the search firm has done a good job of challenging, I'm sorry if there's an echo there, I'm not, I promise. But I think we're in a good spot to go to work for next week and the fifth, to try to pare down this list. And, so, yeah, I, so I think we're doing fine. I think you've covered it well.
Thank you. Okay, moving to the student trustee report. Excuse me.
Travis.
Oh, Travis is gone. Okay. The College Center report.
Colleen's son was sex, she didn't think she'd be able to make the meeting.
Okay. Then we have the report of the interim president.
I will just hit a couple highlights. I'm actually gonna ask Mark Petolik to hit some of the information as far as the COVID-19 Task Force, because that is on the mind of everyone at this institution. So Mark, can you give some brief updates where we stand?
Thank you, everyone. Good morning. First of all, not sure why it's echoing. We worked through all our various medical exemptions. The date for filing has closed fast. Want to thank Amy, Jason, our notes, and Patty Lucido for bringing up those applications. We had over three hundred exemptions submitted, and over a hundred and thirty were approved. We're still working with SUNY on how to handle non-compliant students. We discussed that yesterday on the SUNY call. There are two different competing viewpoints of four-year colleges versus two-year institutions. I will tell you that as a generalization, the community colleges are having not as great a success as the four-year institutions are. SUNY obviously does not want to deregister everyone, but obviously, they also want them vassed. Our contact tracing has been busy. We average, through phone calls or other methods, about three to five cases per day. That doesn't mean that we necessarily have three to five positives per day, but we have three to five investigations. We've been a little bit challenged in that area. We had two primary contact tracers, one of them left for other employment, and the one remaining is leaving us in about a month. So we're training some other people on that. Most of our positive cases, just as an update, have come from outside testing, not from our pool testing. So luckily, our pool testing so far has been good. Speaking of pool testing, I want to throw a big shout out to Amy and Katie. Katie, Katie Marshall has now moved on to other duties, and Kim Machalski has taken that over. We had to move our pool testing sites from where they were located for the last almost year to different locations because we have the students back on campus. Erie County Health Department continued to support us, bringing vaccination sites or pods onto campus frequently at North and City Campus. They continue to have a presence Mondays, Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays at South Campus in the old DMV office area, Building 7. We are going through reusable masks. Luckily, the county logistics and emergency services are supporting us. The first week, we went through almost three thousand. We're averaging a little over a thousand disposable masks handed out a week. And as of yesterday, our vaccination rate for staff was approximately eighty-two percent. That's all I have. Any questions?
Mark, what happens to the, those that are not vaccinated and the staff, eighty-two percent, what about the eighteen percent, what happens?
So the, the staff members who are currently not vaccinated are required to pool test weekly. That means they have to show up at one of the three campuses and either do a mouth swab or spit in a tube, and then we pool those, and we send them to Upstate Medical, which luckily is at UB now, so we get a quick turnaround time.
And how has compliance been with that?
As far as pool testing?
Yes, for the people who aren't vaccinated.
It's challenging. That's the next phase we're moving into.
What happens next?
So, the next step on that will be reaching out through HR for staff members, and they'll get an email saying, hey, you weren't here this week. Your failure to comply could lead to further steps.
And does that go in their record?
I'll defer to Tracy Cleaver.
I, I can answer that. When, actually, I have one of my staff members working to verify that people, that employees have participated in the testing each week. And for those that have not, I'm gonna be sending letters out to them. I need to probably have a discussion with Bill. I just made a note about it. You know, I did a little survey with some of the other community colleges to see if they're actually issuing discipline, progressive discipline for employees that refuse to test or just don't show up. So it's been sort of half and half. for employees that refuse to test or just don't show up. So it's been sort of half and half. I, a number of schools are starting a progressive discipline uh on employees that refuse to test or they just schedule it and don't show up. So that's something that I gotta have a further discussion with Bill about in terms of how we might want to.
No discussion with me, Tracy. It is a, a requirement by SUNY. So it's a reasonable request and it's something that it can lead to progressive discipline. So no need to have that conversation.
Alright, this is perfect. Okay, just wanted to make those.
We should, we, we need to be ready for this. This is, I mean, this has been, known this is coming, so we should have a process in place.
Right, right.
And a letter and, you know, it, it goes out the Monday or what, if they're supposed to test on Friday, however it goes, but we need to standardize this.
Yeah, it is. Actually, Terry does send something out. Terry, Terry is here Monday through Wednesday, and every Monday she checks and send a letter out to people. We're sending um emails out to their supervisors as well as employees. So the next step that I'm looking at is just starting the discipline process. If we've notified you over and you're not testing, then I need to take it to the next level. So we are at that point right now.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other?
Kate, under the collective bargaining agreement, we cannot require staff to be vaccinated. We are certainly urging, pushing, encouraging. Uh, students are required and we are complying with all the SUNY and county regulations when it comes to COVID nineteen and vaccination. So uh, there's still some challenges. It doesn't help us when you hear UB saying ninety-nine percent of their students are vaccinated. We're a different type of student, a commuter school. We don't have housing. We don't have the robust athletic teams. Those are all reasons why their numbers are so high, but we, we still have some challenges, but we will follow the letter of the requirements by SUNY and the county.
Thank you.
Bill, this is Jeff. Before we leave COVID, uh, could you refresh the entire group on exactly where we are with fall and perhaps now even winter sports? What's being played? What's been moved to the spring, if any? What's been canceled? How are we doing on the athletic side?
We are uh running men's football, men's soccer. Women's soccer did not play because they could not field a team. They could not get enough players. And we have women's volleyball currently going. We had a ten-day pause with the football team because there was a coach that was unvaccinated. So we had it basically shut down for ten days. Two games that were scheduled are being rescheduled. Uh, we have had some challenges. I mentioned the unplayable soccer field, but we've also had a situation where games canceled because of the bus shortage. Uh, bus drivers, we do have a contract, but we still were caught up with no bus driver to compete in a game, but we are competing in all athletic sports, and we are also running men's, women's cross country right now. Uh, the winter sports, so we've not delayed or deferred any sports to another season. Winter sports have begun to practice or will begin to practice. That's men's and women's basketball and swimming. And that will be uh going on. I'm not sure about hockey. I've not received an update about that, but all, all sports as of now are, are moving forward. The only level is if we don't have enough uh student athletes to field a team, we will not be running the team like some women's soccer.
Thank you. Next.
So I'm gonna, Bob, just uh hop up fall numbers. I, I'm gonna be very, 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 very brief. Uh, quickly, uh, fall numbers, Bob, spring that up. Summer, we actually finished uh five percent ahead of the prior year, but still eleven, twelve percent behind two years ago. This is uh the latest numbers. Bob, if you can go all the way to September thirtieth, one tab over, here to twenty-ninth. So September thirtieth, as you can see, uh, we get this updated every single day. We are actually slightly ahead of last year's head count, same point in time, a little below uh FT. So we're one percent above last year head count, one point five percent below on the FTs. I will caution you, we've seen now a steady improvement for approximately fifteen straight reporting days. The numbers that we're reflecting for twenty-one, we have not de-enrolled students that have never attended. And I honestly cannot predict what kind of impact if a student that is required to get vaccinated is removed from classes, what that's gonna do to our enrollment. But right now, compared to budget as well as previous year, we are doing good. We're still down significant numbers from two years ago, but at least compared to last year, we are, we are trending in the right direction. So that is our fall enrollment. Uh, we are now into full three weeks and we'll start uh de-enrolling our never attends. As far as some other quick updates, um, I will say a program that we just launched for the fall. We have a cannabis program that is part of our biotechnology program. And we actually have thirty-two students that are in that program. Uh, and we just rolled it out this fall. Adium and uh some faculty have really championed this, and we are actually meeting with a, a former ECC Board Member, partner in Hachin Ross, Adam Perry, who was appointed to the Cannabis Control Board. We're trying to look at other avenues, whether it's legal, whether it's business, whether it's cultivation. Uh, looking to do some micro credentialed in this area. We want to be on the forefront of uh cannabis with the legalization and the new legislation. So we are doing very well as far as that's concerned. I mentioned the Oshai Foundation during the course of today's meeting. I received an email. We received another forty thousand dollar commitment, so we're at a hundred and ten thousand dollars against the hundred and forty thousand dollar Oshai match that we had to come up with. And then um, uh, as far as the, um, some of the meetings, we met with Ken Baker from Madai, Trocare Basit Samdi. Uh, we met with Empire State College. Uh, Chairwoman Wilson and some staff met with the Chair of the County Legislature to look at uh the Brick Academy coming to Western New York. She sent a letter of support. I mentioned Scott Beeler, and we've had uh quite a, quite a few items of recognition for both our staff and our students, and I'm not gonna, I'll just send the recap to the board. And uh, I just want to mention that there's a lot of people behind the scenes doing a lot of things. I met with the County Executive and then last week, uh, we met with the County Legislature. Kevin Hardwick, who is uh that Joint College County uh Committee that's looking at ways that we can improve the connection with the county, and he suggested offering some funds for marketing. And we will certainly take uh him on that, up on that. And then uh the final uh item is I want to just thank everybody that was able to meet with the Chancellor. Uh, Chancellor Malatris was on campus the Friday before Labor Day. And I know we had trustees, uh, Denise Len, Travis, attend. County Executive was there early, stayed the entire time. SUNY trustee Eunice Lewin, we had Student Government, uh, North Campus Student Government, Colleen Quinn, Andy Sacco, uh, Phil, Amy, Adium, Tracy Archie, uh, a lot of staff, Juan, that participated. It was a good, uh, good hour plus with the Chancellor. He walked the campus. We had the STEM building and we took uh over the nano technology. And uh Josh Sager texted me yesterday that during a meeting, the Chancellor actually gave us the nano uh facility a shout out. So I'm not sure what the form was. It was something to do with research. So having him on campus was very, very good for the college. So, Madam Chairwoman, that concludes my remarks. I will include my full report uh for board information at, for the next meeting.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Uh, Bill and Denise, Jeff, just a question, a point. Very glad about the reach out to Adam Perry. Adam's an ECC grad. He's a very prominent attorney here in Buffalo and statewide. And as Bill mentioned, appointed to the Cannabis Control Board in New York. So we really could not have a more appropriate, effective advocate for our new program than Adam. So I would just urge everyone involved to stay in close touch with him and seek his guidance on, on what steps might be taken to grow and improve that program, uh, maybe with some assistance from him. So that's one point. And then uh the other, I just missed a number, Bill. I, uh, on the one hundred and forty thousand dollars from Oshai, that's subject to a match where we have to get other foundations or other sources to give us a hundred and forty thousand. I heard about the twenty-five thousand dollar gift from the foundation, which takes us down to having to raise one fifteen, but I couldn't quite catch where we were on that one fifteen, if anywhere.
So uh, the foundation contributed twenty-five thousand dollars. We were notified uh earlier this week, M and T Foundation, twenty-five thousand. Uh, late last week, we were notified, First Niagara, twenty thousand, First Niagara Foundation, twenty thousand. And during the course of the meeting, not that I look at my emails during the meeting, but we received a communication from the Wilson Foundation that uh they have committed to forty thousand dollars. So we have outstanding requests to two additional foundations, and we're hoping to complete that match of a hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Oh, that's, that's really great news, and I know uh the folks responsible for that were praised earlier in the meeting. I'd like to just join that, getting those five or six applications out quickly when we were challenged by Oshai to do that. Uh, very important for the college. Well done.
Hey, uh, also, uh, Denise, on the issue of the cannabis uh developing that program, I, I understand that Bill Nichols from, I think our business department has done an outstanding job of uh developing for, a four-course curriculum um in the cannabis uh field. So um, I just have heardings and, just heard some really nice things about how he's worked on that and put that together, and certainly think we should recognize that.
Yes, Bill Nichols has done an outstanding job. Uh, there's a new department chair in that department who is uh stepping up, and we're actually abiding a couple other faculty members, including uh an individual that's on the search committee, uh, Tom Webb, because we're looking at both the legal and business components. Right now, it's uh just a uh component of the one program, so we're looking at micro credentials. The problem, not the problem, the challenge right now is the, the program could fit in three or four different academic areas. I'm trying to figure out where, what space it makes the most sense, but Bill Nichols is killing it. Uh, he's already has an advisory board uh meeting, I think, next Friday. So it's uh, it's really taking off, Mr. Lenehan.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, uh, President Ruder, for your updates. Um, moving along, uh, we have old, old business. Is there any old business? Hearing none. Any new business? Okay, hearing none. Um, there was no request to go into executive session. Moving along, the schedule of next month's meeting is the SUNY Erie Board of Trustees and Committee of the Whole is scheduled for October twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-one, beginning at nine AM via WebEx. I will just say to all my trustees, it is freezing in here, so if we do have an in-person meeting, dress appropriately. Gee, I don't, I think they're trying to get me out of here fast. Um, but the next scheduled meeting will be via WebEx. Lastly, we have an adjournment. May I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Don't move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This meeting is adjourned at twenty-eight. See you, everyone. Thank you.
See you, everyone.